Good evening, everyone. Welcome to Neshamani School Board's Tuesday, March 22, 2022 Public Board Meeting. Ms. Burns, I have a call, a roll call, please.
Mr. Allen?
Present.
Mrs. Hollenbeck is absent with prior notice. Mrs. Bowman?
Here.
Mr. Kovitz?
Here.
Mrs. Lafferty?
Here.
Mr. Parentano?
Present.
Mr. Cirillo?
Here.
Mr. Sporni?
Here.
And Mr. Sullivan?
Present.
We have a quorum.
All right, thank you. Please rise for the plaid of allegiance.
(inaudible). The United States of America, and to the following who stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to mention the board met in executive session this evening, prior to this meeting, to discuss matters of employment, issues related to labor relations, the purchase or lease of real property, matters related to litigation, and matters related to school safety and security. Ms. Burns, do we have any announcements?
No announcements.
Brings us to item 1.06 on the agenda. Dr. McGee, please.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. I'd like to start off with something that makes me sad. We've lost one of our Neshamani family earlier this month. Joan Disaroon passed of a long illness in our transportation department. She was a bus driver with Neshamani for 16 years. So if we could all take a moment of silence to thoughts for Joan, her family, her friends, and her colleagues. Thank you. Now moving on to things that make me smile. As you came in today, you noticed artwork from around the district. Thank you, students and staff at Schweitzer and Sandberg. And if you take a look at that, it makes you smile, that they created that and took pride in it, and now it hangs for us to see. Additionally, it was a week for smiles. Somewhere this week, or late last week, I saw on social media, our Coaches vs. Cancer here at Maple Point is an annual event that came back last year. Large, multi-middle-school event run by Mr. French and the administration and staff here at Maple Point. What made me smile not only was the event, but they donated $31,000-plus dollars to cancer So add that to my previous reports. Remember Minithon, $27,000 to cancer research? And then the pink out at the high school, $11,000 to cancer research? They're just the five-digit numbers that make this meeting. There's a whole bunch of four-digit numbers and three-digit numbers out there. So Neshamani students and staff continue to make the world a better place, one act at a time. Moving on to things that made me smile this week. Here at Maple Point, there's something called a coffee cart. It's run by fifth-grade students in a particular class, and for the most time, I miss it because I'm somewhere else, or on a call, or in a meeting. But this particular week, I happened to be there, and they came in my office, and we took a picture of prop coffee cups, and it made me smile because I know, not that long ago, and maybe presently in some other districts, those kids didn't get to go to their neighborhood school. So here at Neshamani, those kids go to their neighborhood school. This is where we are meeting our equity, inclusion, and really bringing our community together. So it made me smile, and it prompted me to say that Mr. Devlin's going to come and visit us at the work session, explain how many other groups are like that, and why it's important that they go to their homeschool. So that made me smile. In the meantime, Mr. Devlin already got bumped before he actually got the invite to the meeting, because I was at the grocery store on Sunday, and I got a text message, and it simply said, "Girls Bowling State Champs." And that's all it said. And it made me smile, because I knew what was going to happen on Monday. I know we had just won a state championship. I was a little disappointed, because Monday I was in Hershey learning about state data requirements, but I knew what was going to happen on Monday at Neshamani High School. I knew the girls' bowling team was going to be delivered to Neshamani High School on the top of local fire apparatus with lights and sirens screaming to the applause of their classmates, and that's exactly what happened. So in lieu of Mr. Devlin, we'll push him off to May, the girls' bowling team State Champs will be joining us at the work session on April 5. And finally, things that make me smile. There are two individuals who go to school here. I'd like you to meet them, but I am not the one to tell their story. So I'm going to start with both Mr. Hunt and Mr. Staub are here. So Mr. Hunt, could you come up and tell a little story here, and introduce your guests, and then we'll have Mr. Hunt do the same. This is Mr. Hunt, or Mr. Staub do the same. This is Mr. Hunt, principal of Bequesting Middle School. Push the red button there, Tim.
I need a button for the first time, it sounds like. Okay. We have tonight with us Andrea Ucciservili. Andrea, up here, please. Come on. Andrea's one of our eighth-grade students at Bequesting Middle School. In February of this year, he's taller than I am. Okay. In February of this year, at the end of the school day, one of our fellow students choked on a lollipop. Andrea, without hesitation, jumped up and performed the Heimlich maneuver. He dislodged the lollipop from the student's throat, and he saved her life. He has been nothing but humble about this. In my opinion, he is a true hero, a true asset to the Bequesting and Neshamani community, and we are very proud of his actions. So for me, to everybody, Andrea especially, and your family here today, thank you for keeping one of us with us, and thank you for being a fantastic citizen. Thank you.
Family, come on up here. Andrea's going to demonstrate on Mr. Hunt.
Please don't break me. (laughter) Everybody, everybody, turn around. Go inside. Get up here, right there, please. Let's see Andrew's butt. Eric, thank you. (applause) It's yours. It's yours. I met up with Brian.
Next up, Neshamani High School principal, Mr. Ryan Staub, with another story.
Good evening, Superintendent Dr. McGee, School Board President Mr. Allen, School Board of Directors. Tonight, I have the privilege of introducing Neshamani High School sophomore Cory Hamburger, who is here tonight with his parents, Lisa and Andrew Hamburger. Cory is the youngest of six siblings. Cory, would you please come up to the front? So Cory is the goalie on the Neshamani High School club hockey team, and as he modestly explained to me, he currently has a save rate of 9.8. I think that's pretty good. I'm not really sure what it is, but he told me it's good.[536.45][536.45](laughter) Cory is also a member of the varsity lacrosse team, where he plays midfield. In late January, Cory and a friend were playing pond hockey on Lake Afton in Yardley, when he saw another kid fall through the ice. The boy began screaming for his friend to help, and his friend, too, fell through that ice. His friend attempted to save him, but couldn't. Now we had two kids in danger. Without hesitation, Cory recognized a safe spot where the ice was thicker. Cory hustled over, told the kids to grab his hockey stick, and although he was a little scared, he never panicked. Cory was able to safely pull the students out of the ice. And in my conversations with Cory since this incident, he kind of made it as it was no big deal. But Cory, it is a big deal, because you saved these two kids' lives. Cory, you represent the very best we have at Neshamani High School. So on behalf of Neshamani, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. McGee. And I believe, on behalf of the board, we are in awe of both of you, and just, as has been stated, that's the best of us, and we couldn't be prouder. Thank you so very much.
And before we get to public comment and other routine matters, this is a great time to sneak out, if you want to leave before the rest of the meeting. We will not be offended. We will not be offended, all right?
(inaudible).
Oh, yeah, absolutely. Good stuff.
As our families file out, that brings us to our first segment of public comment. Ms. Burns, do we have any sign-ups this evening?
There were no sign-ups.
No sign-ups. The podium is open. Anyone changed their mind and would like to approach and speak to the board on a... Bring this... Keep doing that. Public comment to a close, and that brings us to two, item two, routine matters. I would like to make a master motion for item 2.01, 2.02, 2.03, 2.04, and 2.06. I have a motion on the floor. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Cirillo. Any comments or discussion on those? Hearing none. Call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? And abstentions? Hearing none. Motion passes. Oh, I'm sorry. 2.05 bid is tabled for probably the work session, I believe, April 5. That brings us to item three on the agenda, Personnel Administrative. Mr. Parentano, please.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. I'd like to make a motion for 3.01, Retirements, Resignations, End of Assignments. Be it resolved that the Neshamani Board of School Directors hereby approves the following retirements, resignations of administrative staff, and there is one name associated with the motion.
We have a motion on the floor. Do I have a second?
Second.
A second by Mr. Sullivan. Any discussion? No. All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. I'm sorry, and we are eight...
Eight.
Eight-zero. Thank you. Brings us to item number four, Personnel Certificated. Mr. Sullivan, please.
Item 1, Retirements, Resignations, End of Assignments. Resolved that the Neshamani Board of School Directors hereby approves the following retirements, resignations, end of assignments per certified staff, and there are 12 names on the list.
Motion on the floor. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Parentano. Any discussions?
At this time, there's multiple people on here we'd like to recognize. Dr. McGee, please.
Thank you, Mr. Parentano. Number of certified staff retirements to be recognized tonight. Rosemary Begley, 15 years. Catherine DeVos, 30 years. Janice Inasenti, 33 years. Donna Janod, 35 years. Teresa Madison, 16 years. Frances Skip Mason, 32 years. Colleen McElhenney, 29 years. Peggy Pullen, 24 years. Donna Reichert, 29 years. And Laura Sulen, 34 years. All retiring at the end of this school year. Thank you for all you've done for the Shaminie and your long-term service. It's what makes it work around here, the institutional memory and people who've been here for a long time. Thank you, Mr. Parentano, for remembering.
All right, thank you, and I appreciate all of those names you mentioned. I happen to know Ms. Hulan. She was a classmate of mine in Our Lady of Grace in Pendel. So 34 years. Congratulations, all of you. Thank you for your service. I know.
Vote, yes.
I didn't forget. I was just getting to that.
(laughter)
But thank you.
(inaudible).
And I asked for a second, and then we discussed. Let's call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And abstentions? Item passes eight-zero, or motion passes eight-zero. That brings us to the page. Mr. Sullivan.
4.02 Appointments. Resolved that the Neshamani Board of School Directors hereby approves the following appointments per certified staff, and there's two names on the list.
There is a motion on the floor. Do I have a second?
Second.
A second by Mr. Kovitz. Any discussion or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention? Motion passes eight-zero.
4.03 Leaves of Absence. Resolved that the Neshamani Board of School Directors hereby approves the following leaves of absence for certified staff, and there's one name on the list.
Motion on the floor. Have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Cirillo. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes eight-zero.
Mr. Allen, can we master motion the rest, the next three or four?
Yes, you may.
Thank you.
(inaudible). Well... The exception 4.06.
Okay. I'd like to make a master motion to approve item 4.04, Revised Leaves of Absence Start Dates, 4.05, Revised Leaves of Absence End Dates, 4.07, Ancillary Appointments, and that's it.
All right, thank you. There is a motion on the floor. Do I have a second? Second by Ms. Bowman. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Abstentions? None. Motion passes eight-zero.
Mr. Chair, on that, we just missed the opportunity for discussion. I just wanted to bring to the attention that Dr. McGee let us know that this is the first time in two years that summer stock will be returning to Neshamani. I know it's something that everyone looks forward to, and just wanted to make sure that was mentioned.
That is correct. I thank you. Yes, summer stock. My family enjoys it. I am very glad. We've missed it for the past couple of years. Two years, I think?
Two years.
Two years now.
4.06 Co-Curricular Appointments. Resolved that the Neshamani Board of School Directors hereby approves the following co-curricular appointments for certified staff.
And there's 23 names on the list.
There is a motion on the floor. Do I have a second?
Second.
A second by Mr. Kovitz. Do I... Just call for a vote? Yep.
Might as well do a roll call vote.
All right. Ms. Burns, may I have a roll call vote?
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mrs. Bowman?
Yes.
Mr. Kovitz?
Yes.
Mrs. Lafferty?
Yes.
Mr. Parentano?
Yes.
Mr. Cirillo?
Yes.
Mr. Sporni?
I would be under the abstention column. My wife is listed as number 20 of 23.
And Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Seven yes, one abstained.
I thank you. Motion passes 4.06. That brings us to Agenda Five, Personnel Support. That is usually Ms. Hollenbeck. I ask Mrs. Lafferty to do that for us, please.
I'd like to make a motion, 5.01, Retirements, Resignations, End of Assignments. Resolved that the Neshamani Board of School Directors hereby approves the following retirements, resignations of support staff. There are 11 names on the list.
There's a motion on the floor. Do I hear a second?
Second.
A second by Mr. Sullivan. Any discussion?
At this time, Dr. McGee, would you please?
We also have some long-term employees retiring. Sandy Wilson, 33 years. Lynn Weers, 31 years. Ruth Moat, 28 years. And Ron Felotovic, 19 years. Thank you for your long-term service to Neshamani.
Yes, thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Abstentions? Motion passes eight-zero.
Resolved that the Neshamani Board of School Directors hereby approves the following appointments of support staff. There are five names on the list.
There's a motion on the floor. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Parentano. Is there any discussion on Agenda 5.02? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And abstentions? That motion passes eight-zero.
5.03 Leaves of Absence. Resolved that the Neshamani Board of School Directors hereby approves the following leaves of absence of support staff. There are two names on this list.
There is a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Sullivan. Any discussion? None. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes eight-zero.
5.04 Revised Leaves of Absence. Resolved that the Neshamani Board of School Directors hereby approves the following revisions to previously approved leaves of absence of support staff. There are six names on the list.
There is a motion on the floor. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Cirillo. Is there any discussion or comments? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes eight-zero.
And 5.05 Ancillary Appointments. Resolved that the Neshamani Board of School Directors hereby approves the following ancillary appointments of support staff, and there's one name on the list.
There is a motion on the floor. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Cirillo. Is there any comments? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes eight-zero. Brings us to Agenda Item Six, Business Operations. Again, Ms. Hollenbeck is not with us this evening. Mr. Sullivan, please.
6.01, Sunday Facility Usage. Whereas according to Board Policy Number 800, facilities fields may not be scheduled on the Sundays without school board approval. Now therefore be it resolved that the Neshamani Board of School Directors hereby approves Sunday usage for Lower Southampton Athletic Association has requested Sunday usage for Bequesting Middle Fields on Sundays, April 1, 2022, through December 1, 2022. Humveeville Soccer Club has requested Sunday usage for Heckman's Fields from April 1, 2022, through June 12, 2022. Falls Athlete League has requested Sunday usage for Carl Sandberg-Albert Schweitzer Fields, April 1, 2022, through November 30, 2022. And the Bucks County Challenger Baseball has requested Sunday usage for the Shaminie High School Girls' Softball Fields, April 3, 2022, through May 22, 2022.
Thank you. There is a motion on the floor. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Cirillo. Are there any comments or discussion on that motion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Abstentions? That motion passes eight-zero.
6.02 Changes to the Bucks County Technical High School Articles of Agreement. Whereas the Neshamani School District has partnered with other Lower Bucks County school districts to form the Bucks County Technical High School, and whereas over 300 Neshamani students attend the Bucks County Technical High School annually, and now therefore be it resolved that the Neshamani Board of School Directors approves the revised Articles of Agreement as edited between the partnering Lower Bucks County school districts.
There is a motion on the floor. I will second that. And at this time, I would like to ask, Don, if you would, explain it. Mr. Irwin, explain what that, what we're voting on.
Yes, we have, there's been an agreement by the sending districts to amend the Articles Agreement, and the biggest amendment to this is that the sending school districts are now permitting the vocational technical school to retain a fund balance of $250,000 above their annual operating costs for the first two fiscal years, the years ending June 2023 and June 2024. And the specifics in the agreement say that the fund balance shall be used for equipment replacement or operational repairs to the technical schools approved by the Joint Board Committee. So it's one establishing that they can now have a fund balance in the amount of $250,000, and what they can use that fund balance on. As you can imagine, an organization the size of, you know, a high school that size, they had a need for some additional funds, if you will, that were available because they weren't spent during the fiscal year, to, you know, repair and/or make equipment purchases as needed for the students' benefit. So the sending schools have agreed to this amount of $250,000 for the first two years of the agreement.
I thank you, Mr. Irwin. Yes, Ms. Bowman was in on the early discussions of that, and Mr. Kovitz and I negotiated it. It's basically, the tech school didn't have a rainy day fund. That's what it amounts to. All extra overcharges for pupils who had dropped out or whatever was returned to the district. This allows them to hold on to funds for specific uses, as Mr. Irwin has outlined. Are there any other discussions or comments on that? Hearing none. All those in favor?
It's a roll call vote, John.
It's a roll call vote. Thank you. Ms. Burns, roll call, please.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mrs. Bowman?
Yes.
Mr. Kovitz?
Yes.
Mrs. Lafferty?
Yes.
Mr. Parentano?
Yes.
Mr. Cirillo?
Yes.
Mr. Sporni?
Yes.
And Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Eight yes.
That motion passes. Wonderful. Thank you. It brings us to Agenda Item Number Seven, Educational Development. Ms. Bowman, please.
Sure, I'd like to make a motion, 7.01, Out-of-District Placements. Whereas in order to meet the educational programming needs of specific students, it may be advantageous to utilize the services of out-of-district providers. Now therefore be it resolved that the Neshamani Board of School Directors hereby approves the out-of-district placements identified below, and there are three students on the list.
Thank you. There is a motion on the floor. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Sullivan. Any comments, concerns, discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes eight-zero.
I'd like to make a motion, 7.02, Summer 2022 Programs Approval. Whereas the Neshamani Board of School Directors has provided summer school opportunities for students in the previous years that has allowed them to master academic materials and/or explore new areas of study. Now therefore be it resolved that the Neshamani Board of School Directors hereby approves the attached summer school opportunities for 2022.
Thank you. There is a motion on the floor. Do I have a second?
Second.
A second by Mr. Kovitz. Any discussion? Comments?
That does include summer stock, right?
Yes.
Correct. Any other?